I call this meeting of the Saginaw City Planning Commission to order. Let me check my agenda, because I want to start in the right order. I lost track of my agenda. Could we please have a roll call?
Mr. Plans, excuse, Commissioner Faust.
Present.
Commissioner Glock. Commissioner Whitinger, did I say that right? Commissioner Milne.
Here.
Mr. Moore.
Here.
Commissioner Nash.
Here.
Commissioner Orange.
Here.
Mr. Oster.
Thank you. First item on our agenda is approval of the minutes from the meeting of November 26, 2024 with any corrections. Are any corrections offered by the commissioners? I will entertain a motion to approve those minutes.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the minutes from the November 26 meeting. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The minutes are accepted. Next item on the agenda is the approval of the agenda. I will entertain a motion to approve the agenda. Are there any additions?
Support, more.
Moved and supported to approve the agenda with no changes. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion is approved. We will move on to new business. First item under new business is a public hearing. Case number PPLCM24-016, special use permit to allow public assembly at 500 South Hamilton Street. Good evening to everyone. I'm the chairman of the planning commission. This is our regular meeting, and we have a special use permit case before us. When the case number has been called, if you are interested, please come forward to the podium, give your name and address to the secretary for the record. After the presenter's presentation, others may comment. The meeting is videotaped, so it is important that only one person speak at a time, and the audience observe respect for the speaker. An affirmative vote of the majority of the members present is necessary to grant a petition, in this case, a special land use approval. Recommendations on all petitions made by the commissioners are then forwarded to the city council. Under the public hearing guidelines, the purpose is to address the commission with regard to the subject of the hearing, not other topics. Speakers shall address their remarks to the commission as a whole and not to individual commission members, city staff, or the audience. Could we please silence cell phone devices? The applicant whose application is the subject of the hearing or their designated representative shall be the main presenter and will be allowed 10 minutes for their presentation. Each additional speaker commenting on the subject of the meeting will be limited to three minutes. Is there anyone here who would like to comment on the case? Do we have a presenter or their representative? Please come forward, state your name and address for the record.
Pastor Travis Thayer, 4155 South Airport Road, Bridgeport, Michigan, 48722.
You may go ahead.
Thank you, commissioners, for seeing us tonight. We simply would like to, again, thank you, everybody, for taking your time. So, we're interested in the 500 South Hamilton building in Saginaw. As you can see in your packet, we have a proposal put together to put a mixed-use commercial community hub in as a downtown location for our church. Our church is currently located in Birch Run, Michigan, Saginaw Valley United. In two years, we'll be celebrating our 70th anniversary, so we're a well-established church, and we are currently reaching Saginaw City in many capacities. And those capacities bring us into Saginaw quite often, so we've been looking for a location downtown or in that vicinity to house many of our ministries, one of them being city outreach. We do food pantry, clothing closet, that kind of ministry as well. But we also would like to plant a downtown church of some sort, and that's why we're meeting here tonight, to grant the assembly request. So, in addition to that, we're also looking at some mixed-use commercial space in the building, coffee shop being one of those, as mentioned there, and I think you have the architectural blueprints that show that, possible daycare slash Christian school, maybe rental for that. We may not operate that ourselves, we may rent that out, depending on the opportunity there, maybe some top-floor residential development as well, as is currently being done in the downtown area. So, we would like to capture the current feel and vibe of downtown as much as we can. Our church has a history of investing in the community. We started in downtown Saginaw some 70 years ago and slowly have moved away from the downtown area into the suburbs, so we've kind of made it our goal to get back into the city. We wouldn't be moving our church, we would be just planting another building. And again, we have a history of investing in the community, investing in the building. As you can see from the blueprints, it's a very nice building that we plan on investing in the community, and I hope they can be proud of it. And I would be glad to answer any questions that you guys may have about it. Thank you for the time.
If that completes your presentation, are there others who wish to comment on the proposal? Come forward, please. Handouts?
Good afternoon, I'm Alex DePerry, 170 Canterbury, Saginaw, Michigan. We own multiple properties in Old Town, Saginaw, including the case building, which is two blocks from the proposed development. While this is an admirable venture, I don't see how it meets the requirements for approval for the following reasons. As defined in the city zoning code, the general character of the RMU district is, quote, "intended for new commercial, office, residential, park, and marina development," unquote. The code further states, quote, "A prime characteristic of this district is two cores of intense pedestrian activity, Old Town and Downtown, where shopping and merchandising activities deserve the entire community," unquote. Within the RMU district, the property falls into two subcategories. The main building and parking lot are zone RMU-RC Riverfront Commercial, where the intent is, quote, "to provide opportunity for more suburban-style commercial development," unquote. The parking lot facing Niagara and the vacant lot facing South Hamilton are zone RMU-UF, Urban Flex, where the intent is, quote, "to acknowledge the transition of industrial uses to flex spaces such as integrating attached residential units," unquote. Again, while the venture is admirable, it's not the highest and best use of the property because it encourages neither shopping, merchandising, initially, this is the first I've heard of housing, in the district per the zoning codes, nor does it meet the standards of special use. I therefore request that the petitioners, which must be denied. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else to comment?
Good evening, commissioners. Thank you for the time here. My name is Paul Barrera, and I have operated a business in Saginaw and Old Town for over 19 years, and our family has operated businesses continuously in the city of Saginaw for 77 years. I'm here because I feel that this proposed project not only contradicts the riverfront mixed-use zoning just spoken of, but also is contrary to the several of the planning commission's standards for special use variance. It is not a proper and desirable use for the landowners, residents, and the businesses adjacent. And although notices are only required for property owners 300 feet away, this proposal will impact an entire business and mixed-use district that is currently investing tens of millions of dollars in the adjacent areas for new housing and for businesses. And it would probably cause an unreasonable injury to the value of other properties in the neighborhood instead of this space generating new jobs, property taxes, and income taxes for our city. It is not necessary for the public at use at this location, and in fact, I know of an available property a mile away with an auditorium, gyms, classrooms, cafeteria, and kitchen, and much more, that would probably save this organization's goals, which, as nice as they are, at least a million dollars to develop. However, I would caution that the ultimate duplication of services in their plan will now compete for the limited community resources for the funding and continuation of the many existing and respected organizations located nearby and within our city. All of these plans are within a single facility that proposes addiction recovery next to a childcare center, are you kidding me? After-school tutoring, space for at-risk individuals, a free-for-all used clothing and furniture distribution center, and a food pantry giveaway that could cause massive traffic jams on Hamilton Street. Most importantly, though, the ambiguous plan for this facility also alludes to potential residential opportunities, all as part of the rest of it, that could be quietly added to if you approve this variance, all of this on our beautiful waterfront and next to our newest city attraction, the Silos. In my mind, this proposal, as great as it sounds, should be denied. Thank you.
Thank you. Does anyone else wish to comment?
My name is Kyle Heilman, H-E-I-L-M-A-N. I live on 4425 Brockway Road, Saginaw, Michigan. Previously, I've worked within the social work industry. I believe that if we were to look into the socioeconomic areas of Saginaw, there is not enough we could do in providing addiction services, food services. These things are built within the community. We can't, we can't just see, we have so many people who are struggling, so why could we limit them based on anything? I think that the code required that there would be services to everyone. It sounds like there's a coffee shop, which would increase services, right? There's a financial aspect of that. That's the mixed-use aspect of it. I think that any opportunity that we have to help the people of Saginaw, we should take it, because what's done in this room will be felt in the community, I believe, for years to come. It seems to be a well-thought-out plan. I'm not familiar with the zoning and the codes, but I do think that any group that has 70 years of service to helping people should be heard on principle alone. So, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else to comment?
Good evening, honorable commissioners and city staff. Thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. My name is Russell Lindman. I reside at 110 Brailey Street, about six blocks away from this proposed project. We own several properties in Old Town Saginaw, including multiple parcels across the street from this proposed development. Old Town needs more full-time residential and commercial development. This proposed use will be a detriment to the current and future development of Old, within Old Town. While I commend the applicants for their stated intentions, there are already similar, if not identical, services being offered by Old Town Christian Outreach, which is only two blocks away from this location. I'm deeply concerned about how vague their brochure is when it mentions residential opportunities and other unidentified future uses. I can tell you that I believe some of the proposed services they did identify and the clientele that they may serve are not a good fit for the surrounding property and business owners such as us. This could be a great development, but in an area that's already zoned for it, and there's multiple areas in the city that are zoned for this. I am the vice president of the Old Town Saginaw Association, and it is amazing to see all the great progress that has been made throughout Old Town. And honestly, in my nearly 23 years as owner in Old Town, the future has never looked so bright. We are blessed to have many wonderful developers, businesses, and residents who are all dedicated and determined to improve Old Town Saginaw. What we need, we still need support from city officials and representatives such as all of you. Please help us by not approving this special use permit request. A vote against this is a vote for the future of Old Town. Thank you.
Thank you. Does anyone else with further public comment?
How are you guys doing today? I'm Tony Krasinski, 1002 Court Street. I actually own the Saginaw Town Junction where this is being planned to go across the street. Now, I look at it as this is a restaurant, bar, and association for everybody to use during different times. I do not agree with this coming in. The problem is, is we've had other churches down the road block my driveway, block the access to customers, my delivery, everything, lines up and down the road. I've had it at least six or seven times this summer, and we've had to call the police to have them removed, because I have delivery people. There is a place and time for these things, and the time that the community needs them, great, we do need them. But right here in downtown, we need to put it where the people are, in the communities, not downtown where there is restaurants, festivals, everything. Drug addiction, I have dealt with it all my life. I own adult foster cares in Saginaw County. I've owned them, been in the business since '71 with my parents, so I know the longevity. I've lived in Saginaw all my life. I don't think this is going to be good to where it is right now. There is other buildings, Mackinac, Brockway, there's other buildings that are more suitable for this kind of entity or this venture. Downtown is not where it's at. We need something more residential where they're going to be permanently there. Drug addiction, addictions across from a bar, restaurant, kind of a bad idea, don't you think? Childcare? I mean, we like to close down early. We don't like the riffraff, we're trying to clean downtown up. I just don't feel like this is going to be a good call. So, appreciate it.
Thank you. Is there any further public comment? Anyone wish to speak? Any other public comment at this time? We'll ask one more time if there's anyone else wishes to speak to this proposal?
My name is Candace Thayer, 4155 South Airport Road, Bridgeport, Michigan, 48722. Greetings. Thank you for hearing us out tonight. I'm a member of Saginaw Valley United, where the church that wants to plant a church in the riverfront area. And we have, we have fallen in love with this building, not just on a whim. It started two years ago when we, my husband and I have been, we love Saginaw. We've had the opportunity to leave. Obviously, we live in Bridgeport, but we have actually sold our home, we're closing, and we are moving to Saginaw. So, we are a young couple, bringing our family, moving into the city. And I think that I want my kids to have a great riverfront to go and visit. We take our kids to Jake's, we take our dog to Posh Paws to be groomed and things. So, we are trying to create our home and neighborhood within the riverfront development, not only just to support the businesses, but to be neighborly, because it's a place that we want to end up. And our desire with the riverfront campus, as we call it, is, yes, the church, yes, the coffee shop, and the outreach ministries as well, but we want to, that's just, those are just ministry things, those are just ministry things that any church of worth their salt will have. Every church will have outreach, every church will have youth programs and recovery programs to meet the needs within their community. But our church is special. We have been around for 70 years, and I will tell you, every time that we take on a building or a property or anything like that, it turns to gold. The value is raised around it, the community falls in love with us, and we become something that the community couldn't imagine having not been there before. And so, I know that those are things that aren't, those are more dreamy-type things, you know? These gentlemen have presented their, you know, the codes and the facts, but I would say that I think there's room in the community for, if, my husband and I are considering buying one of the $250,000 to $300,000 condos on the riverfront. So, with that being said, the neighborhood has to be a place for young families to raise their children, and I think a daycare is a huge part of that. I need to have somewhere to take my kids on the way to work, and if I have to drive all the way to the township to the daycare and then where I go to work or things like that, so I think if we're trying to attract different people and young families into the riverfront community, if that's the intention, maybe young families aren't the intention of the riverfront, I'm not sure, but I think that a daycare could be a wonderful thing, wonderful. So, thank you so much. We look forward to moving to Saginaw.
Thank you. Is there any other public comment? Anyone else wish to speak to the proposal? Would anyone else like to make a comment at this time? And for, Mr. Gullit, is there written communication?
I have a written communication, yes.
Oh, okay, please.
This comes from Peter Silva from 401 Jackson Street. I agree to have another church for the public. The building was with the RN nurses that moved to another building. I truly believe that the building is the best for a beautiful church. I wish that the building is great for everyone. May God bless all.
Thank you. If we have no other written communications, anyone else wish to comment? Anyone to speak to this? Anyone else to speak at the public hearing? If not, I will entertain a motion to close the public hearing portion of our meeting?
Some little more.
Support, Nash. It's been moved and supported to close the public hearing. Any comment from the commissioners, or shall we proceed to a vote? All those in favor of closing the public hearing, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Public hearing is now closed. We will proceed to consideration of the proposal. Any commissioners to make a motion?
Some little more.
I don't have a motion.
You don't have one?
No, you get to make the motion.
That's what I just did.
I'm unclear on your motion.
I'll make a motion that we open this up for discussion.
Make the motion.
I will, if I may? We need a formal motion either approve or deny.
To approve.
To approve, and then you either vote for or...
Well, there's nothing that prohibits us from moving to deny or approve.
Robert's rules, it's a motion to approve, and if you, if it is...
That's fine. If that's going to, if there's a motion to approve, the alternative then would be a motion to postpone. At this point...
You would still need the motion to approve, because then you would postpone the decision on that.
Then is that what the motion was intended to be?
That's what my motion was intended to, so we decide to discuss.
To approve for purpose of discussion, is that correct?
Right.
And that's where we're at?
That's what it was.
Appears we have a motion to approve the proposal.
No, not approve it, to discuss. You got to open it up for discussion before we can approve it.
I'll restate the motion.
Support. Okay, we got a motion to approve, support, now we can move into discussion.
Yes, at this time, would any commissioners like to discuss this?
I will.
Oh, Commissioner Glock.
Yes, thank you. I do have serious reservations, and I think Mr. Barrera hit some of them appropriately. I can't see that it is a particularly desirable use for the landowners, residents, and businesses that are adjacent for a whole number of reasons. Frankly, I haven't even heard anything. No, let me rephrase that. I'm a little concerned because some of the things that are listed on the continued impact aren't really very clear, and it is a long laundry list of things. 10 different items, some of which are appropriate for a church, others, I guess, I don't know, somehow this is much broader, I think, than what was intended for the mixed-use district we're talking about here. There are other places around, people, we all know about other locations that might even be better with schools actually attached. Churches, there's a church on Michigan that actually is vacant, is, I believe it's for sale or had been for sale, and it's got a school attached. Converting this space, which was commercial, or at least service-oriented directly, it doesn't seem to me to fit. I don't know how, whether or not it would cause, it would depreciate the value, but you are talking about people spending a lot of money. We all know that there's several big projects going on here that could significantly improve the residential and the commercial nature of this district. This is not really, when you look at it, a commercial or residential plan, although it does talk about possibility of potential residential opportunities, but we don't even know what those are. We don't know what kind, or what kind of people, in all honesty, that would be. I don't want to, the idea of the proposal itself is probably a very good one. I just don't feel it fits this district. It isn't necessary for this particular location because there are other properties available. So, I would not agree with this, and I would vote against it. Other commissioners? Commissioner Orange?
So, I have a, I actually personally don't have a problem with the church being located in this area, because even though the other outreach center is nearby, the need in Saginaw is great. They can't meet all the needs of the community. Just even on a personal note, I was just out driving around volunteering, feeding the homeless, and we were all over the city. And so, some of the, I don't know, the potential clients, let's say that, participants in the outreach services, they're already in the area. You know, that's, I don't, I don't necessarily think that it's going to be an influx of undesirables flooding the area, the food ministry, the food pantry, that's all going to happen certain times of day, certain days of the week. I would have some concern, though, for your residential, for the residential piece, because during church services, it might be a little loud for those who are upstairs or where, you know, that are above, I'm assuming they would be above the church or this, so that might be something to think about. And then the daycare, should that happen, I would have some concerns, is, okay, we want to make sure that the recovery program hours are going to be after the daycare closes. You know, there are some parameters that you have to think about there having those, mixing those demographics in the building at the same time and so forth and so on. I could also understand the issue with traffic and parking, though, during church service hours. So, I guess I do have a question. No.
Can't?
Can't, okay.
Unless you decide to go out of order.
Yeah.
Certainly make a motion to do that.
No, I don't want to go out of order. But, I mean, those would, those are the, the things that are in my mind. I don't think that, in my personal opinion, that it's going to drop the property value of the area at all. It might change the vibe. It might change the vibe in Old Town more than anything else, but that's probably during church services, because people who are going to patronize a bar, guess what, they're still gonna go to that bar, they don't care what's down the street. So, anyway, those are, those are my two cents. But I would just wanna be sure that the daycare piece is, you know, those hours are separated, and then you have to give some thoughts to your residents of the rental property and the church service, so. That's all I have, thank you.
Any other commissioners? Commissioner Moore?
My concern, I think it's, the group is to be commended. I think that the effort and stuff they're doing is good. However, we gotta be real. How, 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 I hear you, and I'm looking at this impact, and I'm looking at all of this stuff, how is all of this gonna be done? Then you got a timeframe on here that you're gonna have it done by a certain time. I'm not knocking the program, I think the program is ideal. Again, we have Old Town not too far, what, six blocks away? Go eight blocks, and you've got the soup kitchen. Go another seven blocks, and you've got the food pantry that we just funded through, through our dollars. So, I guess I've got some concerns with all of this running over and the timing, you know, the timing of it. The way it is now, I could not go for it, but I could go for postponing to see if we can relocate another avenue. I would go for that.
Any other commissioners wish to speak? Commissioner Oster.
Yes, I agree with Commissioner Moore. I think it's a great idea, I think it's something that's needed in the city. I have been all through the west side, and I live on the east side, and I live right by the rescue mission. I'm very active in the city, and to the young gentleman that spoke tonight, I do know the needs of this city. And I do know that there is needs for the food pantry. When there is a food distribution in my neighborhood, they are lined up for a mile. And they are lined up Hoyt Avenue and Emerson, so, and especially with the soup kitchen. I volunteered there, so I know, I know that there is a need. So with that said, even on this side of the city, and like, we know that there's a mission center over there. So, but with the downtown development, and with the development that's happening in the Old Town district right now, even with the demolition to come with 303 Adams and the commercial retail urban living that's gonna go on there, there is definitely a movement in that area. And with some of the other buildings that I can think of right now for this development, we, like, there is, and the young lady spoke, that they're moving to move into the condominiums that are on Hamilton, that church, school, gymnasium is really located right just across the street. And there's another building that I can think of right now that is potential, I know it's privately owned, but the Serenity Building, which is over off of Grashit, is another perfect with lots of floor space that could be almost, I think, probably this darn near the same amount of square footage that could be an area where there is, actually, you'd have the space or the, the street space for distribution if you were gonna do food distribution. Even the church over on Hamilton, you would have quite a bit of the streetscape over there where you wouldn't have any of the traffic jam that some of our business owners are concerned of. So, I applaud you for what you're doing because our city really does have a need for this type of service, and especially with the recovery drug, the drug recovery that you are offering. I've actually worked on that program. I actually brought the safe syringe harm reduction program into the county. That was something that I worked on, so I know that there's a need for that as well. But I think that there could be another location for this type of a building. So I'm sorry that I, that's just my feelings on it, but I do applaud you for, and I hope that you can find a location for such a service. Thank you.
Any other commissioners? I would like to make a motion to go out of order so that I can ask some questions on the affairs.
Support.
It's been moved and supported to go out of regular order to address the appellant. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? We are out of regular order. Mr. Faust. Based on your own numbers, you're gonna need a minimum of about $1.7 million. How are you gonna come up with that money, or do you have it already?
We would gladly take donors, if anybody wants to donate $1.7 million. We do have some funds available already, not 1.7, but we are prepared to invest in the building. We do realize that there are, as you said, a laundry list of items that would be a goal to complete. Obviously, all those wouldn't be done at the beginning, and we would try to approach this in a achievable manner. So, 1.7, no, not off the get-go, but we would get there.
You said that you want to reestablish yourself in the city of Saginaw. What did you do previously in the city?
So our church was originally founded in Saginaw on Genesee Street. Previous to that, it was actually, another pastor was actually right down the road from the building where it was at. Don't have that address handy, but we used to be located in downtown Saginaw. And again, it's our goal, our name is Saginaw Valley United. So we would like to get back into Saginaw. Eighty percent of our reach is in Saginaw, and we're 15, 20 minutes' drive to the building and to the area, so we would like to get closer to downtown. And we have looked at some other buildings, many of...
How many years ago was that?
About 70. Yeah, 68.
You're talking about drug rehabilitation. Do you have licensed counselors that can help with that rehabilitation?
That would be the goal, not yet, but that would be the goal. We currently don't have the facilities suited for that, nor are we close enough to the need at the moment.
And what are your plans to separate the drug rehabilitation from daycare?
As the Commissioner Orange said, it would be certain times a day, so most of that would be scheduled and appointment only. Most of our classes that are listed here, life skills training, job coaching, all of those are class-based, and most of them don't happen on a regular basis throughout the week, so you would have regular times for the daycare. And then you would have special times for certain classes that most likely would only happen once per week by appointment in the evening.
You've alluded to having housing in the building. What kind of tenants are you talking about?
One option would be myself. I would gladly invest $300,000 into a luxury condo on the top floor, so that is an option. We would probably not open it up to open rental, but it would probably be somebody that we selected either within the church, so that they would be used to, obviously, a church function, either a staff member that would pay rent, or a pastor. And it would be on the third floor, and the church would be on the first floor, so there would be a separation. But yeah, that is an option. We would most likely not convert it to mass housing. It would not be housing addiction, or a halfway house, or anything of that manner. And I do believe that the tenant that was looking to purchase the building before us was looking at housing, and they backed out of the deal with Covenant Healthcare because the cost was gonna be too great for the building.
Okay, thank you.
Absolutely.
Anyone else with questions for the presenter, while we're out of order? Commissioner?
Can you talk more about the plans for the cafe?
Sorry, can you repeat that?
Can you talk more about the plans for the cafe?
The cafe, yes. So that is a piece that we're looking at as a focal point, again, to capture the commercial space for the downtown location, because we do know that's important. So it would be open, regular business hours to the public, most likely rented to a private company who would be paying as well, so we understand that that would be taxable income, which I do believe the current zoning of the building is non-taxable because it's a nonprofit organization with Covenant Healthcare. So we understand that as a church, that's a concern for taxable income for the community, but there will be, obviously, the coffee shop. If we were to rent any of the space, we understand that would be taxable as well, so one option also was top-floor office space rental, which we know that would be taxable. But the coffee shop would be open, regular business hours to the public, and it would be a large space for the public to purchase coffee and baked goods, those kind of things.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Any other questions from the commissioners?
I got a question.
Commissioner Moore?
How many floors is this building?
Three plus across space.
And so, when you look at this building, does it fit in the scheme of everything that's going on around you?
I'm not sure I understand the question.
When you look at, when you look at this building, okay, I'm looking at this, I guess what keeps, what keeps my eyes, is these 10 impacts that you got. These are all of the things that you plan to do eventually, or just something that you jumped in here doing.
Yeah, most of those are class-based. So the main operation of the building would be the church and the coffee shop, and the executive office space, and the daycare. So if you flip over to the previous page where it talks about the community hub, those are the four main functions of the building. That would be public serving in large capacity. The next page is more class-based by need, and, but the community hub is the church, the coffee shop, along those lines. But the fit, if I, I think what you're asking is, we would do our best to make it fit the vibe of the downtown area. We understand that's important to the community and to the business owners.
It is. Saginaw is being rebirthed.
Absolutely.
And so, in being rebirthed, we want to make sure everything is connected, the dots gotta connect. If the dots don't connect, then we all gonna be in trouble.
Absolutely.
So, my concern, again, is, I commend you again, I commend you guys for wanting to do this. I just think it's not a real good fit, but that's just me.
You do have the architectural rendering for the outside of the building, right?
Yes.
Okay, just want to make sure.
Commissioner Orange?
Who would be the pastor? Have you all selected the pastor? Would you...
That would be myself and my wife, yep. And we have three kids.
Be in charge of this, be the...
Absolutely.
Oh, just, okay.
We've been involved in ministry for about 18 years at the church, so...
So opening, so say this is approved, and right out the gate, well, you know, once everything is ready to go, church services, coffee shop, like, what are the top things that you're gonna do as soon as you open the door?
The top thing's actually gonna be the coffee shop. So we're gonna rehab the outside of the building and make sure that the coffee shop can be done, that's first, first choice. The church side of it would probably be six months out. We may start meeting, you know, on a smaller scale, but we would, our goal to launch the church service probably summer of next year. But the coffee shop would be priority one.
Okay.
Absolutely.
Any other questions for the presenter from the commissioners? I would entertain a motion to go back to regular order.
Support.
Been moved and supported to go back into regular order. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? In regular order, we have a moved and seconded motion to approve the petitioner's request, and we can return to discussion on that. Commissioner Clark.
Yes, I've already said my piece to some extent, but I do agree with, first of all, I don't suggest that the project isn't appropriate for the city, nor that it's not needed in the city. It probably is a very beneficial potential project. And I think, Commissioner Orange, you used a word, and actually, so did the presenter, the word vibe, now that's not a very scientific term, but it does fit sort of what we're talking about here. It has to fit with what the purpose of a riverfront mixed-use is, and we were informed, we should know already, but it was brought up by one of the opponents saying that it is identified on the city zoning map as a transitional area of the riverfront and, in this case, the Washington Avenue corridor, which is intended for new commercial, office, residential park, recreation, and marina development. That's fairly specific, and very little of what I'm hearing for this proposal fits that. The other part is, it says a prime characteristic of this district is two cores of intense pedestrian activity. Well, that goes along with the idea of highly developed residential and commercial, which this is not aimed at that. A coffee shop is commercial, but it's, if you look at the long list of potential things, it's not commercial, most of them. And then the riverfront commercial subcategory, provide opportunity for more suburban-style commercial development, well, this doesn't, I don't believe that fits that. And then the urban flex district, the second subcategory, now it's a transition of industrial uses, which riverfront had been in the past, to flex spaces, including strategically-integrated attached residential units, and to establish residential neighborhoods along certain quarters. That's where the word vibe sort of fits to me, I'm, what my objection is. I don't think this fits that vibe of what we're trying to develop in Old Town, and what the people who are willing to invest their lives and their money into the development of a residential and commercial district there. I don't feel it fits, and again, that's why I will be voting against it.
Any other commissioners? I have a couple of comments I wanted to make on it. Looking at the special use approval standards is where I see the questions about the project. We've heard a lot of public comment that it is not compatible with adjacent uses of land, questions about its promoting safety in its proposed use, and questions about will it cause unreasonable injury to the value of other properties in the neighborhood. Under the special approval standards, also, it finishes with, if you approve a special use, you can have conditions on that that are required for it. And listening to the discussion about this, it seems to me there would be quite a number of conditions that would need to be defined to find support for this proposal. And this evening, I don't see that we've been presented with specific enough conditions that we might want to have to approve the special use proposal. So, those are my comments on it. Any other commissioners wish to speak to the motion? Could we restate the original motion?
It's a motion to approve the special use.
Just a motion to approve the special use approval.
Permit for public assembly.
Yes, the, the actual thing being sought approval for is the public assembly portion. The other parts of the proposal are ancillary to that, it's kind of the linchpin that brings the others into focus. So, if we have no other comment on that, we can proceed to a vote on the proposal. Commissioner Moore?
I'd like to put another motion on the floor that we, that we postpone this for these 60 days, so that we can give...
This would be an amendment to the original proposal, or...
No, no, it's a secondary motion.
How's that properly handled, then?
She already did it.
She did it properly, she just...
Oh, okay, so to postpone is a motion that's acceptable?
Motion to postpone for 60 days.
Yes, okay. I'm a little... It's up on my Roberts's, I should be. Okay, there is a motion to postpone consideration of the original proposal. Is there a second for that?
There's a second.
Seconded, two places. Okay, and is there discussion on that, or is motion to postpone proceed?
I did just want to point out one thing because Mayor Moore had indicated earlier that she wanted to make a motion to postpone so that they could maybe look at other locations.
So that, yeah, and I wanted to say that.
But, but that is not a proper basis for a motion to postpone?
Okay.
Because all you would be doing is kicking the decision on this application at this location down the road. Were they to move to another location, that would be a second application, a second review process, so, you can't amend the location. It would, it would require a whole new application if they were to go to an alternate location. So I just wanted to clarify that, if that was the intent of the motion to postpone.
That was the intent.
Okay.
You know, that was my intent, was not to just kick it down the road. I don't want to kick it down the road. I want at least... I'm, I want to at least give them an opportunity, because I think the program is a viable program, just not a fit for that. Just not a fit for the location that we're talking about. So, I guess I, I was, I don't know.
The, the motion and second are out there, it's on the table. I just wanted you to have that information as you run into the vote on it.
I have a question. It included sixty days. Is that a discussable component if you add a time thing? For instance, if another member wished it to be thirty days postponement, or ninety?
It would be a motion to amend to the motion to postpone.
Okay. So, the motion as it stands contains sixty days as how far we're postponing it.
My, yes, I was moved, if we're gonna postpone it, then it'd be postponed to the February twenty-fifth meeting. That's a specific date.
Oh, okay, for our purposes, for our purposes, put a meeting date, not sixty days.
That, that would be more than sixty days away, so we'll do that.
I understand, that's why I'm making it a specific date, because that's an actual hearing date.
So, are you amending the motion?
It would be a motion to amend for...
If, if the original motion, if she would like to put it to a specific meeting date rather than sixty days, or would...
His, his motion to amend is appropriate.
Okay. Is there a second to amending it to...
Second.
Okay. So, it is an amendment to the motion to postpone, that it be postponed not for sixty days, but to our February twenty-fifth meeting?
Right.
February twenty-fifth meeting?
Right.
Closest to the sixty days. Any discussion on that?
Yeah, I have a question.
Mr. Orange?
If we're postponing to set forth the additional conditions that might be required for approval outside of the original request?
That is not part of the motion.
That's not part of the motion. Like, why are we...
The, the motion is, is to put a specific date on the postponement. So, you'll have to vote on this, then you'll have to vote on the postponement.
Okay, gotcha, thank you.
So, your first vote is just on the amendment?
Right.
And then, your second vote is on the postponement as amended, if that passes?
This is the amendment to postpone to the February twenty-fifth meeting. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, now, the motion is to postpone the proposal to our February twenty-fifth meeting. And, is there a discussion on that, or, okay? Anyone have any question?
Well, then, Charlene, I guess in this time, I mean, if anybody has any questions or needs more information, you can reach out to staff.
Yeah. The, the motion...
Or, or discuss amongst each other as to...
Thank you.
Yeah. The motion itself does not contain a reason for the postponement at this time. Any...
But if we were to approve the postponement, then the original motion to approve goes away?
That, that is what's postponed.
No, it's tabled.
It's tabled.
It, it will be, it will be, it would be on the February twenty-fifth agenda under unfinished business.
So, otherwise, we don't get to it.
But you are allowed to, and I think to Commissioner Orange's point, you are allowed to discuss amongst each other why you want the postponement, why you might not want the postponement. You guys can have discussion as to whether or not you feel that is an appropriate motion or not.
Yes.
I guess that was my question, right?
Yeah.
Because to, to the comments that you made about what the original application was for, and what we were voting on tonight, and the additional conditions that might be potentially needed.
That is one of the things I, I commented on.
Yeah.
But it's not part of the motion.
Right.
That might not be why the commissioners want to postpone.
So, but if we're gonna come back to the table and make the same decision with this, if there are no changes, if there, if we're not going to spell out any conditions in between, not come up with any conditions between now and February twenty-fifth. Am I making sense?
Yes.
Commissioner Clark?
Thank you. It's, it's a little confusing, but I, I guess, I don't know how the vote will come out, but if we were to be, if the motion were to fail, they could always come back with another proposal, which is where I would think might be the better option. So, we could, then, we could defeat the motion to, to, to postpone, and then, uh, we would have to vote on the original motion. If it passes, it passes. But if it doesn't pass, that gives them the opportunity, and all of, and it gives staff opportunity, whatever, to do further discussion about any potential limitations on their proposal, whether it be at this place, someplace else, or...
And, and for some clarification, I think conditions being passed upon approval are established by the commission, not staff.
Right.
Yeah, so...
Right, but that's where the proposal could be changed by either, by, by the proponent, or in conjunction with standard, whatever. I mean, but that would come back to the commission with the different, with the restrictions that were being proposed. And we would then have to decide whether to impose those or other ones. We could create our own restriction, is what you're saying. But they could come back with...
I'm saying, I'm saying staff doesn't prepare a list of conditions for your...
No, no, I agree, I agree. That would be the subject, though, of further discussions if that was desired by anybody, so. I, I, I guess, I pro, think it's best to vote on it now. And if it's gonna fail, it's gonna fail.
I'm in agreement with that.
I'm with, I'm, I'd like the postponement. After we've already voted.
Well, no, that will be the first motion we're voting on, the postponement. That's, that's the motion we're on right now.
Right, that's the motion at the moment. Whether to postpone or just get the matter doubled today, that's what you're...
We voted on the February twenty-fifth date.
Yes.
For, for the postponement.
For the postponement, yes. What we did, no, 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 yes, okay, gotcha.
Any questions or comments on the motion we're on, which is to postpone to our February twenty-fifth meeting, the original proposal? Okay. At this time, I'll ask for a vote on that. All those in favor of the postponement signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
Aye.
Nay.
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 I think we need a roll call vote.
Yep.
Please.
Commissioner Faust?
Nay.
Commissioner Clark?
Nay.
Commissioner, uh, Wiedinger?
Nay.
Commissioner Milne?
Milne?
Yeah, I'm...
I don't know what you're saying.
Nay. Mr. Moore?
No.
Did he call me? I'm sorry.
Mr. Nash?
No.
Mr. Orange?
I thought that against my own opinion, I just did. I did it wrong.
Yes.
Mr. Ostache?
It wouldn't have mattered.
Yes.
So, the motion to...
The motion to postpone has been denied.
It's been denied.
Okay. So, now we are on the original motion to approve the special land use permit. Any further discussion on the original motion, then? Okay. I will ask for a vote then on the motion to approve.
Probably should do, probably should do roll call.
Okay.
Just a reminder that, um, if you're, you, you have to state a basis for your vote.
You have to...
I, I, I guess, is that done before? Because we, motions have been made. Are you waiting for a reason now, or you want to do it afterwards, if, whatever it is?
As he does roll call, you state your reason.
Okay, good.
Commissioner Faust?
Is that just, question, is that just when it's a special land use? We voted on things before, I don't remember us stating our reasons, I'm not.
It, it's for site plan special, anything that's appealable.
Oh, okay, this is appealable, then?
I would have to double-check, but...
Okay.
The record has to state a reason.
Correct.
The record has to state a reason.
All right.
I don't know if it has to come from an individual, but it has to be stated as a reason.
Got it. So, roll call vote then for the original motion to approve the petition.
Commissioner Faust?
Nay. Uh, the reason is that I don't believe that this will reasonably promote the use of land in a socially and economically desired manner.
Commissioner Clark?
Nay, I also, uh, for several reasons. I don't think it fits the current riverfront mixed use, identified areas as a transitional area. I don't think it fits the subcategories. I don't think that, um, it is a proper desirable use for, for the landowners, residents, or businesses that are adjacent. And I don't think it's necessary for the public use at this specific location. So, those are my reasons.
Commissioner Wiedinger?
Uh, nay, uh, because the assembly use, um, makes necessary keeping at least the hundred and twenty-one parking spaces. And I don't think that is the highest socially and economically desirable manner for the land use.
Commissioner Noem?
Nay, I, I think the questions of safety and possible damage to other property value in the neighborhood are unanswered.
Mr. Moore?
Nay. Compatible adjacent to land usage. I could think of some more, but that's the one I'm looking with.
Mr. Nash?
Nay. Same reason as Mayor Moore, is compatible with adjacent land use.
Commissioner Orange?
Yeah, it's a tough one for me. I'm going to say nay. But primarily because the plan is very, it's specific, but it's broad right now. I'd like to see it narrow down. And so, maybe there could be some way to find a compromise or a better fit with some tweaking of the plan.
Commissioner Ostache?
Uh, I'm gonna say nay, and quote that option number three is compatible, is not compatible with the adjacent uses of land, and also, number one, will reasonably promote the use of land with socially and economically desired manner for those persons who will use and propose a land or activity for those landowners and residents who are adjacent, and for the city as a whole.
And the motion fails.
That is... Do we end up with a document to do that, or is that only on approval?
Yep, I'm just throwing it out here.
Okay. All right. Next item on the agenda is approval of our planning commission calendar for the year 2025. All the commissioners have that. Any questions? And I will entertain a motion to approve the calendar.
Some more.
Seconds.
The calendar as presented, uh, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Proposed? Meeting calendar for next year is approved. We now have a period for public comment on any business of the commission. It does not have to pertain to tonight's case. You can address the commission on anything we work on. Any public comment? Anyone have anything to say to the commission? Yes.
In, in regards to the last motion of, um, the riverfront property, would it help to have more defined information around the coffee shop? Or would it, what's the, um, would that be a helpful thing?
I guess the only way I can respond is that may influence some commissioners, but...
Well, not to...
This isn't a back and forth discussion.
Yeah, so...
If that's your comment.
Mike, yeah, okay. So, then, my, my thought is that if we can promo, I mean, promote healthy business, um, through a coffee shop, I mean, for any number of you who may have lived in a house, or when you were looking to purchase a home, just because you had the opportunity to buy a house across the street doesn't necessarily mean that you should do it or you shouldn't do it, you know? Just because other properties are available doesn't mean that that's the property that should be available to you and you alone. I think that, um, as long as it's within due standing of conformity towards the vibe, the non-scientific term, but, and I, I, you know, as I live four minutes away from the building, I, I, I do think it matters, the vibe in the area. But as long as it's in due perpetuity towards the efforts of Saginaw as a city, then I think that, uh, it's, it's a great opportunity, and, um, I would, I would hope that this would be potentially reconsidered, so, thank you.
We're not coming from you. Any other public comment? Under old business, we have the zoning ordinance rewrite to review some language in it. I see we have a presenter on that.
All right, good evening, planning commission. I'm Andy Amont with Giffords Webster. I think I saw you in March or April when we presented our audit. And now, we are here tonight to begin presenting some of the text as we've drafted it. So, um, there isn't a decision that needs to be made tonight or anything like that, but it's just, uh, get a broad consensus on how these couple articles of text look to you. Gonna scroll through here real quick, okay. So, as a reminder of really where we're at right now, um, we, uh, we're looking to have a couple of these meetings with you to just discuss the text, and it's, uh, kind of in its, in its article form, so, kind of how it's organized. So, tonight is a, is a discussion on Articles One, Six, and Seven. We hope to have Four and Five at, uh, hopefully, the next meeting, and then Articles Three and Two at the following meeting, so, um... I just want to also, uh, uh, point to the, the materials that were provided to you. The, the text in the clear zoning format is, uh, kind of the, I believe it's twenty, thirty pages of, of zoning text, as well as the cross-reference chart, which is a chart that shows where you have current language sitting in your, uh, in your current format, which is, it, there's a, a column that says one fifty-three point oh six three. And then, we, we point out where that text kind of then translates to in the updated, uh, clear zoning format. So, um, we provided that materials, hopefully, as a guide to show you where the text was and what it looked like to, where the text will be, and how it will look in a new format. So, um, I also just want to disclaim that we are tying together a lot of the in-ordinance references. So, we have a few instances where, where we say, um, the non-conforming cost valuation as stipulated in XXXX. That means we're pointing to that section, or subsection, that stipulates the cost valuation part. I'm sorry that those loose ends are still a little loose and not tied together better, but we will do that, obviously, as we go forward here. So, to discuss the presentation here, uh, I see this presentation maybe being fifteen, twenty minutes, but we're gonna have a stopping point halfway and a stopping point at the end for discussion. Throughout this presentation, I bring up kind of three main logos here. The one is that the policy change occurred because it was supported in... The one is that the policy change occurred because it was supported in the master plan. The next little logo says that it came from our zoning audit, which was kind of our full-on review of your existing ordinance. And then the last one is that it's generally supported by the planning professional organizations that we try to support in our work as planners. That's the American Planning Association and the Michigan Association of Planning, which is the MAP or the Michigan's APA chapter. So all in all, we put together this text as kind of a reflection of what the steering committee came through or kind of decided on in terms of broad policy that's supported by really those three aspects. So I'm not going to talk about Article One a lot. That is the, kind of the purpose, intent, and scope of the zoning ordinance. It's a lot of the legal jargon in a way that kind of supports the ordinance as a lawful ordinance. We did add a severability section that states that, you know, if the courts ever reviewed the ordinance because of a lawsuit or whatnot and determined a provision invalid, it doesn't make the whole ordinance valid, invalid, it just says that portion is invalid. So I'm going to move to Article Six. So this is where it gets exciting, at least from a zoning nerd, is it gets exciting. We talk about development procedures here. So site plan review, special land uses, and zoning amendments, and really what those review processes look like. So major changes to site plan review pertain to the level of authority, level of plan provided, informational items required, and the validity of the approved site plan. I'm going to jump into each one of these real quick. So here's a flow chart. I hope you can see it. It's maybe a little small. We can maybe follow up with this in a, in a, you know, PDF form so that you can see it, you know, later. But first things first, we went through revising the way the site plan review process works here. So, and the things that get reviewed and in what manner they are reviewed. So in this example, I wonder if there's a, is there like a, there, it doesn't show up well, okay. So the question here in the, in the purple box is, is the proposed use of permitted or special land use in the district in our requests for waivers throughout the ordinance involved in the site plan? And so if the permitted, if the use is a permitted use in the district with no waivers recommended and no changes to the site or the building proposed, we see this being what's called a zoning administrator concept review, which is done by the zoning administrator, AKA the urban planner. It's just a renamed role that, you know, can be maybe be more consistently applied throughout different places in the ordinance. And in that instance, it's a very brief review. There's a very brief informational requirements provided. They're not, oh, you have a question?
Is that, we were trying to follow, but we don't have that particular site, slide to show us.
Yeah.
But there is, on the zoning rewrite cross-reference chart, there is this portion here.
Yep.
I'm assuming that's where you are.
Yeah, yeah, so I would be talking about...
It's easy tonight, thank you, Laurie.
Well, I've got a follow-up question on what we were specifically talking about. I want to make sure that we know where you are.
Yeah.
And what, the reference chart.
So I, in the reference chart, so I'm pulling up that reference chart here. Thank you, Bob.
And it looks like that's Article Six.
Yep, Article Six, one.
Section Four.
Yep.
Plaid approval, and it says little to no update.
That would be for the plaid approval. We're talking about site plan approval, so one, one row below that.
Okay, the one, the row way down below, right down here is what it's still.
Yep, yep, yep. So site plan review.
Oh, gotcha.
Six, one, and then there's a lot of blue text there.
It's not at the top of the blue text, it's at the bottom. The section and article reference. It's at the bottom. Normally I would look at it for the top.
Okay.
That's fine.
Got it.
So it's the blue language, you're talking about the review of Thor.
Yep, we're talking about...
Is that a change from the, language-wise, from the current language?
Correct. It's a pretty major change, so...
Well, that's what I want to know. What's the major change?
Yep, yep, okay.
And he's trying to walk you through it.
Yeah, I'm going through that.
Well, we don't have that.
You're going to love it. He's, he'll take the PDF.
Yeah, sorry about that. And I'll, and I'll discuss it a little bit more on the following slides as well. So right now, the planning commission reviews a, the planning commission reviews a decent amount of cases. I think you're, you're in the right place where you're not reviewing every single aspect of your zoning ordinance that ever takes place, which I think is really a tough practice because it puts way too many cases on your agendas. But right now, we review a fair amount of site plans, even if they are permitted uses by right, and even if they do comply with the zoning codes, let's say, parking requirements or screening requirements, there are still cases that reach your desk.
What's the criteria for that?
Uh, what?
Coming to us, what is the criteria?
Yep, yep, yep. So right now, your ordinance says that, right now, your ordinance says that the chief inspector, which I think has kind of been delegated to the urban planner in a way, reviews residential structures having four or fewer units, accessory structures and uses thereto, a change in use of a structure of land which does not require additional parking and does not involve exterior structural alterations, an accessory, an accessory building containing 1,000 square feet or less in addition to an existing structure if such addition totals 25% or less of the floor area of the existing structure. Anything else, you review. So you would review anything that, let's say, there's a change of use of the structure that requires additional parking, you would review that. If there's a structure that adds 50% or more of floor area, you would review that even if it's a permitted use and even if that structure addition complies with setbacks and other lot coverage or other site dimensional standards.
So my question then is how, what will the ordinance provide?
Yep.
For staff to know when it has to come to us?
Yep.
He's, he's trying to read through that.
So, yep, so I'll get to that.
You gotta let him present.
Yep, yep, yep.
Okay.
So...
Just trying to follow up.
In the, and I, I'm sorry, this flow chart came up a lot smaller than I thought it would look when I designed the slide. Permitted uses with site and building changes, but no waivers, so no, no request to waive parking, any parking requirements, or no request to waive a landscaping requirement, or no, no request to waive a building facade requirement. Those kinds of things are still, are reviewed by, by the urban planner or the zoning administrator, no matter how big it is. So it could be a, it could be a, and I'm just being, I'm being exorbitant here, but it could be a three-acre site with a 50,000 square foot building. If, if it meets the zoning requirements in that, let's say, in an industrial district where it's permitted by right, and the urban planner can check that off on the zoning ordinance and say it meets every standard, there's no discretion here, he can make that review. And that's what we've decided on, that's what the sub, the steering committee decided on, is they said, no need to bring something to a, a review body if it's meeting the zoning requirements that are accepted by that review body and by city council in the formulation of the zoning ordinance. A lot of that is supported by, and their approach was mostly for housing, but Michigan Associated Planning did say that one of the best things you can do to permit more housing, ease the process of permitting housing projects in your city, is by eliminating, is by expanding administrative review. They said that the more you can administratively review, or the more that the city administrator or the zoning administrator can administratively review projects instead of sending it to a board or commission, the better chance you will have better housing in your community and more housing choice in your community. So that's, that's mostly a housing thing, but I think it does speak a little bit to other uses too. Let's say somebody wants to build a, a small little, a small little bookstore, and it meets all the zoning requirements, why require them to wait, you know, two months to get on a planning commission agenda if it's something that the urban planner could potentially do in three to four weeks? So that was a big, we talked about this quite thoroughly in the steering committee meetings, and it was something that the steering committee said, we want to ease that, the administrative review, we want to put things a little bit more in staff's hands, but still keep the planning commission, obviously, for the special uses, the PUDs, rezonings. And there is actually a little, we put a little clause in, in here that says, even if it is a permitted use and it's the zoning administrator, urban planner's role to review, they can still kick it to the planning commission if, let's say, there were a repeat history of non-compliance at this site, or the site has non-conformities that are challenging to, to deal with going forward in that, you know, that perhaps the zoning administrator is a little bit concerned on how to interpret those non-conformities. The zoning administrator can still kick the review to the planning commission and still have them do the review. It's just, it's just, the starting point is the zoning administrator in that instance. I'm going to move on to the next, or actually, now that you're getting this flow chart, maybe we can allow you to look at it. So I won't jump to it yet. But the, so there's really four instances here that we discuss in the orange, and that's the permitted use with no site or building changes and no waivers. That's the permitted use with site and building changes, but no waivers. That's a permitted use with waivers requested. Let's say they can't provide enough parking because they're landlocked or they have a really small site, but it's been in operation for so long, it's built out on a corridor that doesn't have large abundance of land, and they just need to ask for a parking waiver because it's not, it's not, it's just not developable or not reusable as is. That's a case that reaches your, your desk because they're asking for a waiver. That, the waiver can, would probably entail some level of discretion that needs your decision and where it's less appropriate for the zoning administrator to decide on. And then we have the special land uses, which I think has always been the city's goal to have the planning commission review those because those do take some discretion, as you understand through your case tonight. So, and where this flow chart kicks is on that, that little diagonal where the zoning administrator can route something to you if they deem is, is worthy of being routed because there's complexities or controversy, non-compliance in the past. I'm kind of going to, yep.
I just got a quick question.
Yep.
So I'm looking at this, and correct me, this is going to simplify this process for us instead of...
It should, for, for...
Well, a lot of stuff might be not cut out from us, but some stuff staff would...
Yes, staff will have a little bit more involvement in site plans, correct. Yep.
Just wanted to make sure that's what you, I thought that's what you said, okay.
Yep, yep.
I have two questions.
Yep.
I'd love to see, sorry for my newness.
No.
I'd love to see, you mentioned that one of the reasons for doing this is to reduce the council's busy schedule in some ways, that a lot of stuff is kicked to the council. So I'd love to see the numbers on how many site plan reviews, the, sorry, I said council, I meant commission. The commission has done per year for maybe the past three years and how much this is expected to reduce it.
Okay.
But then that's, we might have a better recommendation than three years.
So next month, you'll be getting the annual report and you'll be able to see all of the...
Great, that'll answer my question.
And we could maybe estimate based on that what could have been reduced based on this drafted text?
I'd have to look at the list.
A ballpark would be helpful.
Yep, yep.
And then my second question is, you mentioned that the MPA recommendation is mostly for housing, and I wonder what the rationale is for expanding that in this case beyond housing? If it's a best practice that usually applies to housing, why expand it?
I mean, we just, it was just, I think it's for ease of consistency too in the ordinance text. It's, it's a little, you know, if it's something that we provide for housing, I think it was, it was, made sense to just kind of replicate for other uses as well, just so that there's less if, then, than that type of text throughout our processes. I think I also just, just trying to be, I mean, we're, we have carve-outs in different places, but we're just trying to be fair for developers of other kinds of land uses as well.
It's, it's, the changes aren't just streamlining the process for the planning commissioner for staff, but it's also taking into consideration streamlining the process a little bit for applicants. So when you have decisions that don't involve the exercise of any discretion, it's literally just checking off regulation met, regulation met, regulation met, that's something that can be done administratively and help move things along for those developers.
And in that case, it would be really helpful to have a flow chart of how this currently works and where the proposed changes are. So it looks like we have the, the flow chart of where the recommendation is to move it to, so just a, like before and after.
Maybe a flow chart of the current, yeah.
And, and you guys can ask us questions too. So, so currently, the planning commission reviews every single site plan, every project that comes forward, except for some parking lots, except for parking lots that are strictly a parking lot and except for residential properties.
Right.
Correct?
Yes.
Okay, everything else currently comes to the planning commission for approval.
Or an accessory building to use, small things.
And so here, we show those little logos that generally is supported by, this was something that we discussed in the audit, but it's also something that's supported by the APA and MAP in terms of, especially in terms of housing. They even went so far though too to say that the APA as well says that actually streamlining processes and, and reducing the levels of, of review and the bodies that review a, a project actually increases your, your equity in a community. It makes the community more equitable from a community, environmental, or economic sense because one, you're allowing perhaps a small business developer who has a, you know, a short purchase agreement or doesn't have a lot of latitude to spend a lot of money in obtaining a property. It allows them to get perhaps a review in, in three to five weeks rather than perhaps wait two months to get onto an agenda and then have a review. It's, generally, it's a, it's a practice that the APA has said, streamline, and streamlining this makes your community more equitable. So, moving on, so these are just some examples of that concept.
I'd like to make a comment on this. I've thought about this long and hard, and as the zoning administrator previously, and I want to say first off that none of the current staff was involved in this.
Yeah.
I, I understand the benefits to the applicant in that it's a speedier process, but I also ran into the situation where I was told from above, you will approve this, whether it was right or not, because it was a friend, that they wanted it approved. And I see that being taken away from the, from the planning commission as a secondary way to keep a check on that. And I'm not saying that anybody in the current staff had anything to do with that, but it, it was a problem, and I saw where the planning commission was able to put a stop to a couple of those.
And one suggestion I might have, Cassie and I were just talking about this, is to, if, if, for example, we go with this process, that we provide you with a report of the, the projects that we reviewed and the decisions that were made on a monthly basis.
Would it be done in a timely way that we could review?
I don't know how you would...
What's that?
Because it's not necessarily, it's just a check, it's not necessarily a balance, so, so to speak.
I would refer to Amy for that, but, I mean, generally, when we create... I would refer to Amy for that, but, I mean, generally, when we create our zoning processes, we try not to do them because of, there can be bad influences coming down onto a, onto a city worker, it's.
I, I think the check and balance is that there's, if there's concerns about it being implemented this way. The provision of that list of projects that were approved, while not subject to the change of the planning commission, if the planning commission started noting problems in the approvals, they could always ask for the zoning ordinance to be opened back up and changes to be made, if changes needed to be made.
And I, I would assume that, that report, I mean, I'm not saying start FOIA-ing everything that your urban planner ever does, but I would assume that that approval report is FOI-able, it's a city, it's a city document, so. Um, I would assume there is a, still a way that, you know, an approval document would still be shown to the public's light to some extent. So, um, I would say it's probably, it's a good concern, but it's really probably not something we want to put a ton of focus on in terms of how we go about this zoning process. But maybe, I think we can add some language that says, the zoning administrator shall um, update the planning commission on administrative site plan approvals within uh, or at the next regular meeting or something along those lines. Would that be sufficient to maybe keep an eye on things?
Yeah, definitely.
I would agree, I, I think you always have to rely on the technical staff. Get the reports, and probably be what we need.
What you just stated, we signed an approval document, that's what we just did on a couple of cases. The zoning administrator will have a similar document that requires just their signature, but that is as public a document as what we just did. It can't hide in a file. Anybody that, no?
There would be, there would be a document, yeah.
I, I do see part of Mr. Faust's uh, question though. It is known to the public that a site plan review will happen if it comes to us. If it just goes to the zoning administrator, is there publication in any way? Does anyone know a site plan is being looked at?
No, because it would be a principal use permitted by right, so essentially.
There's, there's no notice required.
Yeah, there's no notice required.
Right, but that's my point, uh, that's a change.
No.
That's still, that's current, okay.
Even if it comes to us?
It comes, so it's notice as in, or it's public as in it's a public body making a decision that somebody can attend your meeting.
Right, that's what I mean.
You don't get, the neighbors don't get a mailed notice for a, by rights.
No, no.
Just to give you an example though, I get lots of calls from people who are, or they'll submit a, a business license application. And they'll ask to change the use of that particular property. And it's my job as the zoning administrator to make sure that that use is permitted and look to see if there is any change that need to be done, like parking or that sort of thing. If there aren't, I just approve.
Okay.
The business license, and you folks don't see that anyway.
And that's very similar to what we're offering with this concept plan review.
Right, that's all I'm trying to understand. It's not a change in what is published right now. There, there's many straightforward administrative approvals that happen. Got it.
So, really, that kind of process is, is really pretty much exactly what this concept plan review is. There's a small level of information that needs to be provided, probably very similar to what you see when you review those business licenses. You know, perhaps it's a little sketch drawn, I mean professionally drawn is better, but a sketch drawn floor plan and site plan that documents, you know, here's our site, here's the extent of our building, and um, this is what the change of use is, is requesting, here's our number of parking spaces. The urban planner looks at it, sees, meets everything, checks it off the list. It goes through the building uh, department process, and they proceed through the uh, development process, yep.
Question, is there a provision that the zoning administrator staff may say, I don't think the concept plan is sufficient, can you provide a more detailed plan?
Yeah, so the, I mean, they would need to cite that it does not meet the ordinance in some manner, and then it would need to go, they would need to provide more detail in a site plan review case. Um, which, if they can show that it then, let's say they then uh, build, you know, that's, the two more parking spaces that would have been required. And they do that, and they show that on a site plan, meeting all of the ordinance's requirements. It's just a site plan review that is approved of by the urban planner.
It's still one step up.
Yep, 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 it's. Yep, exactly, it's one step up, they have to provide a little bit more level of professionalism in their drawing. There would probably need to be a, a drawing that's designed by architect or an engineer that provides, you know, all sorts of informational requirements. Um, it would be kind of that middle column there.
But that's, the question was, that's, the administrator still could make that requirement?
Yep, yep, he can, the zoning administrator would still, would still catch things and say, okay, this isn't adding up. You are proposing a change to your building, and this needs a formal site plan. Yes, it's to be reviewed by me, but it, it's just a, a higher level of, of review, so.
Plus, all of those get reviewed by the engineering department as well, because there's typically utility connections.
I know sometimes you just don't give everything you want, and that's where, as long as you can pump it to the next level, that's great.
Yep, yep, and then, again, the zoning administrator has a choice to then kick it to you. If there is some level of non-compliance that the site has shown in the past, if there's a non-conformity that is um, difficult to deal with, or if um, there's some sort of, um, if the, perhaps the zoning administrator thinks that some sort of externality such as odor or noise could result from the, the use, they could still kick it to you. He could still kick it over to you, so.
Along with the report that the zoning administrator would give it, give to us every, whenever he approved one of these or she would approve one of these, could we get a copy of what was presented to them?
Yeah, and so, as you know, when, when a project comes in, it gets put into our program BSNA.
Right.
And all of those documents get attached to that, and so that's, I don't know if that's accessible though to the general public, all of that information, is it?
Well, we could provide that, I mean, that would just be, you know, an administrative thing, same way.
I guess if you folks requested that or whatever.
I mean, just so that individually, we could take a look at it after the meeting.
Yeah, and to, that's a good point to what Amy said too, is just develop some kind of track record. And if you start seeing that every approval is wrong in some way, shape, or form, I doubt it would be. But um, you know, then, then it could warrant a, a change in the ordinance again, so. All right, I'm gonna move on to, yeah, the site plan review. So generally, uh, we did condense a little bit of your informational items to a kind of a more practical, contemporary um, list of information, so we kind of limit, cut down on, sometimes, uh, site plan review informational requirements are an exorbitant list where they're asking for, you know, all rights of way within 500 feet of the property and um, all floodplains within 500 feet of the, we, we've kind of cut that down a little bit. So, there's a little less informational requirements that are required for a plan, but we still, in our opinion, have a good list that covers all the uh, development basics. There's also a new, so there's a new, we, we added a new kind of procedural step for the plans that go to planning commission. So a, a site plan that's asking for waivers, or is a special land use, or is a planned unit development, there's a check that the zoning administrator can do, and if the zoning administrator says, you're not meeting X, Y, and Z of the informational requirements, this isn't super clear to me what the request is for, or your plan's not detailed enough, they can actually keep it off the agenda by citing those reasons. And it doesn't reach you with, on the agenda until they provide more information. Um, I've worked in communities where I've been pressured to put something on an agenda, you know, rush, 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 put it on the agenda so I can get approved faster, but they don't, they're not even showing you what they're proposing. And, you know, it's, it, I think that that's a key step where it requires a good application by the applicant. Uh, we also clarified the validity and timeframes in which an approved site plan is valid. So for the most part, when a, when a site plan's approved by the zoning administrator or planning commission, it's valid for two years, there is some extension ability that planning commission can give if they demonstrate need. Um, and then also, once construction is lawfully commenced by going through the whole development process, it must not interrupt for a period of, of three years or greater, otherwise. Uh, I, I believe what we said, the billing department can potentially revoke the permits or a performance guarantee, and I'll get to performance guarantees in a minute, could be collect, could be um, um, collected by the city to restore the site to a more protected state. Uh, so that was site plan review, so I'm gonna stop at the end of Article Six, and we can do general questions, but I'm gonna move on to zoning amendments now, if you are okay with that. Um, so we talked about how to clear, initiate or apply for a zoning amendment in the zoning amendment text. We added some requirements surrounding a conditional rezoning request. So a conditional rezoning request where an applicant says, I want to rezone this property to um, to B2, but I'm gonna restrict the uses so that they can only be a pet groomer, a um, a, a, a auto repair shop, and a hotel. That's what a conditional rezoning is, and not exactly what it is, but that's a, where somebody could submit some conditions with their request. And we go through some requirements that the applicant needs to meet to submit the conditions, as well as the way that that's processed. We also add a new set of rezoning approval standards that we believe align with case law. Um, there's, there's, there's a um, a case law regarding uh, spot zoning that we've looked at, that, when I say we, Giffords Webster has done generally with a lot of our rezoning reviews in different communities, that we think is a, is a, um, is a successful kind of case law rezoning, spot zoning review standard. And we added that in there, so that when you are reviewing a rezoning, you are checking those list of standards similarly to what you did tonight with the special use. You cite the standards that it does meet or it does not meet if you're denying the rezoning. Um, moving on to special land uses, so uh, in terms of that criteria you reviewed tonight, we also added another criteria that you could cite in your approval or denial, and that's that the use will not create a, a dangerous or adverse impacts to the pedestrian, to the not transportation network, considering the safety for pedestrians, bicycle, non-motorized, and vehicular traffic. That actually comes from your master plan essentially, your master plan stated word for word that um, you uh, you, the planning commission should focus on, on an action, on actions that create streets that are comfortable to pedestrians. So essentially, we're repeating that there, that the pedestrians should be safe while, while they're walking down your public sidewalks, and perhaps a special use that has cars whipping into the site as fast as possible, or, you know, has a, has a park right nearby that's heavily accessed by pedestrians, and there's gonna be pedestrians crossing the crosswalk, that the site's designed safely. So, um, just an example of a criteria we added. Um, we clarified conditions with language consistent with state law. We added language on amendments and expansions to special land uses. So if there's an existing special land use that was granted approval, let's say, six years ago, and now they want to um, material change their use, perhaps they were a auto, um, paint shop or an auto paint business, and now they want to do full-on collision, that's a, that's a change, material change in their auto repair use that should be brought to you. Um, and, and that, you know, there's a process that that follows. Um, we also um, added language on appeals, reapplication, and replication of special land uses. So that's Article Six, site plan review, zoning amendments, and special land uses. Any, uh, any questions on, on how that went?
I just was curious, why three years as the length of a possible interruption? For, that's an awful long time.
It is a long time, but, I mean, there's always, there's so, so often, there's funding delays, or even sometimes in a, let's say, because usually in zoning, you don't zone for or require things out of the applicant. So sometimes an applicant can even sell the property to a new property owner that then takes the project over, and that can sometimes be a pause in the development process. I mean, if it, we're happy to discuss any kinds of revisions, but if, if three years seems too long, maybe we can discuss two years.
I'm not against it necessarily, it just seems to be long, and I was trying to figure out why you went with that time period.
I think, honestly, it was just because two years sounded a little short. Um, so completely opposite of your, of the way you're approaching that. I guess, for the city attorney, is there, is there a general accepted?
I'm not, I'm not aware of a legal standard that's required. I think that just came out of the discussion with the steering committee and.
Yep, yep, we didn't want a site to sit under construction forever, because that's a blight to, to your community. Yeah, yeah.
But you mentioned the idea of selling, and someone else taking over.
Mm-hmm.
Is there currently anything in the requirements that that comes to us?
Not if they're not changing, if they're not changing anything, and they're conforming to everything that was approved, I believe. That's just a, a step that is kind of worked out by staff's level.
But if it is a change, it would still come back to you.
Yeah, but if it's a special land use and they want to change the usage kind of, or, or the site, or eliminate some parking spaces, or build more parking spaces, it would all need to come back before you.
I haven't seen that happening with the new bill.
Yeah.
Construction, so that's why I asked the question.
Yeah. So, yeah, we do have some language in there that's added, that, you know, when that stuff happens, there are, you know, it probably needs to come back to you based on the language that we drafted.
And I, I think we've seen some of those over the last few years, just the marijuana establishments come to mind where we've had a change in applicants and same site, same use, but they, you know, slight tweaks to the site plans and stuff, and so those have come back for secondary tools.
It's a good question. All of these are good questions, so.
So, at the end of the day, we're gonna continue doing what we're doing with the exception of staffing, some stuff that, I'm not saying is not important, but some stuff they can handle and report it back to us.
Yep.
That's what we're agreeing to.
I think that's the biggest and broadest change of Article Six so far, is that staff has more responsibility.
Right.
And it's, it's for the stuff that's by right by the zoning code.
Right.
Yep.
Okay, so I would like to say, I agree with Mike about, we would like to see some things that happens behind the doors.
Yeah.
Because like with Mike, I've been around as long as Mike, there was stuff going on.
Yeah.
A while ago that was very interesting.
Mm-hmm, and, and, yeah, I think those are real concerns in.
I wonder if I know what period that refers to.
Don't start, yep.
Don't start.
Yeah.
Everybody's quiet.
Well, I'm just here trying to innocently present zoning, so, don't loop me into it. Um, all right, well, let's move on to Article Seven then. So Article Seven is the administration and enforcement article of the ordinance that includes, a lot of it includes non-conformities in zoning board of appeals. It also includes some provisions on performance guarantees and certificates of occupancy. So we did a little bit here in the non-conformities section. So, in terms of non-conforming uses, and this is not, this, this is a more recent kind of development based on case law, to my understanding. A lot of ordinances just say, um, and this is all over Michigan, this is a ubiquitous problem in Michigan, is that a lot of ordinances say, a non-conforming use can cease to exist or can become abandoned if it's just not, if it's just sitting vacant for one year. However, there now needs to be what's called an intent to abandon. So if someone has a non-conforming use in the community, and generally, non-conforming uses, as we all know, they're allowed to continue um, into, into the future, they're grandfathered, so to say, is what people used to say. Um, they're allowed to continue, they just can't, you know, substantially change, or they can't substantially alter their use. Um, now, we added intent to abandon language, where the city would need to, one, first, they would see if the. first, they would see if the use has ceased to exist for a year. If it's kind of paused or expired out for a year, they take no. Then, they need to determine if utilities were shut off, or if signage, key signage was removed from the property, if the property's fallen into disrepair, has been cited for blight violations, has, you know, violations for neglect and vacancy, has, you know, there's another key indicator, I can't think of it right now, but the zoning administrator in the city needs to then cite intent to abandon, to deem this nonconforming use abandoned for good. Now, there needs to be a new use that conforms with the ordinance there. So we've just strengthened that up a bit. Any questions?
Yeah. It doesn't address who makes the determination, not here, anyway.
If we did not, we can probably cite that-
I mean, I would think the staff would make the initial, and then the real question might be if there's an issue, would it come to the commission to make a final decision? I don't, I guess that's where I'm going. What is there?
Most zoning ordinances do leave it to the zoning administrator, then it usually is something that gets appealed to the ZBA. I've actually been appealed on one, in my past before, on interpreting that a nonconformity ceased to exist and needed to be abandoned. And so generally, that's a process. Usually, there's some level of investment that the person has in the property, so they will usually hire an attorney and appeal it. And it's, it would be an appeal of an administrative decision. So it's usually-
The administrative.
Yep, yep. So it's usually the zoning administrator makes the administrative decision.
And it is now.
Yep.
So it's stated on it, there is-
Yes.
That's what I want to make sure.
It's a good question, though.
So it's defined as, as a duty term.
Yeah.
Is this change based on case law?
The, just the fact that there needs to be a demonstrated and written use in the zoning ordinance that, of what intent to abandon means, I think is broadly what we needed to update. It wasn't just that time alone means that the use is abandoned. It's time alone plus demonstrated intent. So, good questions. We also cover that, when there is a nonconforming use change, let's say that a use is nonconforming, it's a furniture factory, and it's in a residential district, and now they want to just build, now they want to just do fabrication of parts, of little, really small-scale manufacturing. And they're arguing that this is a, yeah, it's a change of a nonconforming use to another, but it's a less intensive nonconforming use. That case comes before you as the planning commission. You would then determine whether the change of use from one nonconforming use to the other is permitted. So that is a case that you could see, based on this rewrite. And then, in analyzing that, you could cite vehicular traffic as an indicator, and not approving the change from one use to another. I believe there is a process that the city has, where you can change a use from one nonconforming use to another, but I think it's the ZBA that reviews that. Am I correct by that, or does the planning commission?
I think it's the ZBA.
Yep, yep. So we've just more put that in your hands, because we think it's a more, it's, in my opinion, it's more of a planning commission's matter. You're the ones that oversee the community's planning efforts, the compatibility between uses from one another. That's more so your ability than the ZBA, so. Next slide is the damage and destruction element of your nonconformity text. So right now, your zoning ordinance does not allow a nonconformity, a nonconforming building or structure, as well as a nonconforming building or structure, housing, a nonconforming use, to be rebuilt in the event that the damage exceeds 25% of the full structure's replacement cost. That's pretty strict. That's not along for a lot of reuse and flexibility into the future. And it was, I want to say it was a pretty unanimous decision, that's the steering committee, and everybody decided to up that threshold to 50%. So now, we're proposing that 25% be 50%, giving somebody a little bit more flexibility to reuse or rebuild their structure in the event of a disaster, of a tornado that knocks it down.
What replacement cost is used, how is it determined?
Yeah, so, super good question, because we actually spelled that out in this rewrite. So that gets a very, I'm going to just say, now, some of you might be put to sleep by this, because it gets very technical. But we, first of all, we say that it, that 50% is based on the, so to find the valuation of the property, you would use, and we have it, let me just cite where we, where we put this, so that you can refer to it as well. We cited that in the new 7.1.1. F. And we say that the baseline is that the zoning administrator can use twice the existing pre-catastrophe assessed value of the structure to find that value, or the planning, the zoning administrator can use one of the following, whichever is greater. One, the insurance coverage value on the structure as provided by the applicant, or two, the average of at least two construction estimates from builder's license in the state of Michigan, as provided by the applicant. So there's really three ways to do it. The most readily accessible is obviously the assessed value on the property, and the zoning administrator would times it by two to find kind of the more market value of the property.
Assessed value or tax benefit?
The, yeah, it'd be the-
You don't, you don't?
It would be, they would double the assessed value, which is usually half of the market-rate value. So we do, we spelled out that whole process, and that was all new language, because there was no valuation calculation strategy in the existing ordinance.
I'm aware of the passage, that's-
Oh, okay. Interesting. Any questions on that process? Cool. We also added nonconforming signage requirements, too, language, too. So you, generally, nonconforming signs can't be structurally altered or changed, unless it's one of, unless it's like a structure that's designed to have the face changes. Like, it's a cabinet that has a face that's inserted into that cabinet and replaced that way. Those are the only kinds of really sign, nonconforming sign changes that can occur. But if the sign is being kind of rebuilt, or the sign face is being enlarged, that kind of stuff is not allowed. It's just when it's a cabinet that has a face inserted into it, is when that can continue.
I'm trying to say, does that mean they can change saying that we are doing something different here at this location?
Yes, and we can't, and we can't regulate content. So it could be, it could be just a new business that wants to put in a new sign that says, "We're doing this, this, or that."
But do they have to get prior approval, though, for that change of business in a nonconforming area?
Well, the, this is just assuming the sign structure is nonconforming, this instance.
Oh, just the sign.
Yep, yep. Let's say it's too big, or it's too close to a setback.
Well, it's clear on that.
Yep, 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 yep. I hope so, but that's a good concern. We can make sure, make sure we're not talking about nonconforming uses signage.
Exactly.
Performance guarantees. So performance guarantees are essentially bonds that require that an applicant would submit with their site, with, actually, when they get built, usually it's when they're getting building permits and they're ready to build, that cover essentially the cost of doing the construction in the event, let's say there's a disaster, and now the site's a mess, and the city actually needs to go in and restore the site to a safe and acceptable form. That's usually what a performance guarantee covers, those type of instances. A lot of times, it deals with public infrastructure, because there is a direct city liability to having public infrastructure that's in an open hole, that's on a sidewalk, that's providing a safety issue. But sometimes, it can, but it can extend to the, kind of the site, as how this private site looks. The zoning administrator can now require that to be submitted with a site plan. Right now, it's just the planning commission and ZBA and city council that can require that. So most ordinances do extend that ability to a staff person.
And engineering.
And engineering can do it, too. Yep, yep. And we actually, I think we spell out that engineering can double-check the performance guarantee as well, to make sure it's realistic, based on, let's say, they say that the cost of construction in the infrastructure is $500,000. The engineer would double-check that and make sure it's realistic. Kind of hand-in-hand with that.
They're not that simple. I'd have said, just up to where you are. Please. I understood I thought everything you said, then you confused me, and then Floyd confused me. So it's like, can you make this simple?
Yeah.
What did you just say, the first part of this really was? Just to the point.
Yep, so performance guarantee?
Right.
Yep, so that's essentially a bond, or an escrow, or a letter of security, like a security that a developer submits, to protect the city in the event a disaster happens, and the city needs to pay some money to hire their own contractor to clean up the site or restore it to an acceptable condition. Usually, that happens, for the most part, the cities are usually concerned about where it meets, like, let's say, where site, where site construction's taking place on a public right-of-way, because then the city can be liable for something bad that happens there. But I think, into our understanding, it can actually be, a bond can be submitted for the entire site, to make sure that there's not open holes there that are providing a public safety threat to the public.
Another way to put it is, it's, performance bond is a guarantee they're going to do what they say they're going to do.
Yeah, that's a, that's a good way to explain it.
It's not dissimilar to what, for example, Streets already does with its contracts, or Engineering does with its contracts.
Right.
It requires, for example, Spence Brothers, if they're coming in and they got, they want to bid on a project.
Okay.
They're going to have to provide a performance bond and a labor bond, and-
So everybody has to have a bond, at the end of the day.
Depending on the project, yes.
Most city contracts require performance bonds, to say that they will do the job they give, that they're saying they will do on the day.
Okay.
And if they don't, then the city has to remediate, so that money allows them.
I think if it's a big project that has a lot of, let's say there's curb cuts that are intersecting the street, and the sidewalk's going to be closed for some cert, for some point of time, I think it'd be smart to require a performance bond.
Okay.
Yep.
The solar energy ordinance that you passed, there's a performance bond requirement, so that if they abandon that solar field, for example, the bond would cover the cost of clearing all that back out of there.
He's requested a bond. He did.
It's a guarantee, basically.
Yeah, it's a guarantee that someone will clean it up, and sometimes, it's the city, because the city collects it from them.
I'm telling you. Thank you.
Yep. We're getting really into the nuts and bolts of zoning, when we're talking about performance bonds. Certificates of occupancy, we cover a little bit of that on the temporary certificates of occupancy as well. So that's something that we clarified in the language, that when there's, when a temporary certificate of occupancy is requested, let's say somebody is developing a couple apartment buildings, and wants to, wants to get a certificate of occupancy of one, but they're still kind of under construction with the other two buildings. They're, they want that certificate of occupancy, even if it's temporary, because they want to get people in there living, so that they can collect rent. But, you know, they're going to ask for that, they're going to pressure staff to provide them that, but maybe staff says, "But we want some extra protection. We want to require a performance bond submitted with that, to make sure that, let's say, those two buildings are never finished, we can at least clean that up and have the residents live in a pleasant environment that doesn't have two abandoned buildings sitting there next to them."
A good example of that was the marijuana shops, for example. They were trying to, there were minor things that they needed to put in, like fire exit signs and things like that, but they also wanted to bring their staff in to train them. So we would give them a temporary occupancy permit to allow them to train their staff and that sort of thing. But they were not allowed to open up for business until they received full occupancy.
And that's a good example. I jumped to the most dramatic, most controversial kind of example that could take place. But those are the ti, those are the times that temporary certificate of occupancies most likely occur. We go over the ZBA language. So we talk about appeals. So the ZBA hears appeals of administrative decisions. That could be the urban planner's decision. We've already talked about a few instances, so I'm not going to dwell on it too much. But we also add that the ZBA does not hear appeals from special land use decisions or plan new development decisions. Those are decisions that would go to the circuit court. We talk about variances. So we updated the list of criteria for the determination of practical difficulty in order to grant variances. We also banned the ability to do use variances. That's something that the state allows the city to do. I can't, do you ban use variances right now?
We do not.
You do not?
Do use variances.
Okay, so we're still keeping that practice. So we're still keeping that practice?
Yeah.
Okay, we're just making it more, maybe more clear in the ordinance, that you can apply for a use variance. That's not an option in the city. And generally, we think that's good planning, because we think good planning should go through you, through text amendments or map amendments. So this is the revised variance criteria. I think, due to time, I'm not going to talk about it, but I'll let you review it. It's language that we think meets kind of the, a more up-to-date variance list of criteria. So one of the ones I really like is C, that not every ordinance contains, but it's at the particular request, is the minimum variance necessary that will make possible reasonable use of the land, buildings, or structures. That means if somebody's, somebody says they want a 40-foot setback variance, but really, what they're doing is some exorbitant, and I'm using that word a lot, exorbitant, extension of their structure that's really not needed. They could make do with 20 feet, that you could deny that, not you, but the ZBA could deny that variance, because really, all they need is 20 feet, and they're asking for 40 feet uselessly, so. And then, we talk about the performance guarantee. The ZBA may require that in conjunction with a variance. The validity is one year, so somebody needs to get a building permit pertaining to their variance within a year of approval, otherwise, it expires. There used to be a bunch of special exemptions that the ZBA used to be able to grant. One of those is the ability to have an electric fence. So we're actually giving you guys that ability now. The planning commission will have those special exceptions built into your approval processes. Again, it runs under the same line, that we think you're the best body that deals with observing land uses, compatibility of land uses, and the way that the city is developed as a whole. And the ZBA should more focus on the strict variances that I just talked about. Anything on Article Seven?
Sum it up for me.
Okay. That was about as good as I could do, because there's a lot of language in here.
It was.
I mean, generally, we, we, I think we did the most changes of nonconformities and ZBA in terms of Article Seven. So maybe if there's two places you want to look the most at, that would be, probably be the most relevant.
Okay.
Just one quick question. Under the Article Seven, the last section clarified the period of validity.
Yep.
And it says, must be acted on within one year. But what do you mean by acted on? Or is that defined as it started or finished? What?
That's a good question. Let me double-check that language, because maybe we might need to say that a building permit is obtained, is, has been issued in association to the variance. I think, so we do say, I guess I don't like the way this is phrased. Maybe we could phrase it a little more simpler. We say, "A variance shall run with the land, except that if no building permit in relation to the variance has been obtained within one year of the effective date of the variance, and no erection or alteration is started in compliance with the building permit, the variance shall become null and void." So if that was too much, I mean-
So they have, so it's both? It sounds like they have to get a building permit and have started the work.
And start construction. Yep, yep.
You can't just build a hole, though.
Yep, yep. So you can't just get a permit and build a hole. I mean, maybe you could build a, that's an interpretation question that I think would need to be hashed up. I mean...
No, you don't build a hole.
That's true. You don't build, yeah. You don't construct, you don't construct or erect a hole.
Yeah, construction or erection would probably...
Okay. So, so you would probably need to start laying a foundation, I would assume.
Something to be clarified.
Yep, yep.
All right.
On page 10.
Yep.
You've got PUD. I believe our terminology is PDD for planning.
Yeah.
We're changing that to PUD.
We're changing that to PUD.
Oh, are you?
Yep, yep. So the state, yep.
Yeah.
So the state says...
We're changing BAZ to ZBA.
Yes, we are.
Very good.
That's why, that's where it ended up.
We're trying to use the state's terms because that's, yeah.
Well, this is another question. Since you have these things in zoning, will the zoning board ever see any of us? I mean, if we ever have a meeting again?
We were involved in the 101, but yeah, I guess we shouldn't. We should send that to them.
Yeah.
Yep.
We should definitely send them the criteria.
Yeah.
Because that's, that's new. So that'll need, need...
I think that's needed.
Good point.
So, so these necessary changes that we are doing, we got to vote on, that would now...
Not tonight. You don't have to vote on them tonight. We're presenting them to you. In that next meeting, we're going to have another presentation, just like...
It's going to be a little bit more, it's going to be a little bit more fun, I think, in terms of, we're going to start talking about...
Same time.
Yeah.
Same time. We still going to end up voting for it.
The next three months.
Different articles.
But I want to know.
Fun is defined by a senator.
Like, like tonight was us, the changes are that we're going to give more responsibility to the staff, right?
Yep, that's definitely one takeaway.
That's six, right? That's what number six was.
Yep.
Number seven is, is that we all have to basically have bonds, we have to cover ourselves, and how we cover ourselves is following guidelines. But again, under the leadership of the team coming back reporting us what's going on. Did I get this right?
Well, seven's more zoning.
Yeah, so that was a key part of seven, but we go over zoning board of appeals and nonconformities as well in seven.
Okay, okay.
The other thing I want to point out is what you're looking at here that was handed out, this is kind of what the screen would look like if you were on the computer going through our clear zoning page. That's, that's what it's going to look like. And so these tabs, you'll be able to click on them, or there's going to be particular...
Well, see, we knew all of that. We just didn't see what he had up on the screen.
Well, now that you brought that up, Bob, looking at what you're showing us there, the tabs appear to switch from one side of the screen to the other.
Well, that's the way I printed it.
No, and it's because I deleted some, we have a couple instances where it's, the page should remain blank, and that actually makes it so it's, really good, tabs are only on one side the whole time. But I actually, to save paper, I deleted, some of those pages shall remain blank, so that's why you got a mismatch.
That's okay. That's all I wanted to know, that in actual use, the tabs will always be on one side.
Yep, yep. They'll be on the correct side, like the usual.
Yeah, wait till you see the different zones and the uses and things like that, and the graphics that are going to be part of that. It's, it's very, much more user-friendly.
Good.
I have a process question.
Yep.
So we're going to receive presentations on various sections of this for the next three months, and then we vote at the fourth meeting?
Yeah, you could, if you're comfortable with it. You could say we want to hold the public hearing and vote on it. Yep.
And then it goes to the city council.
[inaudible].
But it wouldn't happen faster than that?
Well, it would be very overwhelming for you to review the entire, this is a full rewrite of the entire zoning ordinance. So I, it's, in the background, we've been working on this for a year. So to give you the whole zoning ordinance all at once...
This is better.
I think it's safe to, I think it's safe to say, too, that the next two meetings will more, will be busier actually in terms of content and whatnot. So this was maybe the easiest of the three content meetings we're going to have. And I'm just being honest with you.
It was the lightest, for sure.
Thank you for the warm-up.
Just at the next meeting, you got to have coffee or red wine or not fall asleep.
It does.
Start in the morning with donuts and coffee.
Yeah.
So that we need to bring back this to our next meeting.
No. That's for you to keep. Look. And read.
He said he got two more sessions, so I didn't know if he wanted us to bring all of this back.
And all, all good questions.
Okay.
Motion to adjourn.
Support.
You guys beat me to it. Okay, it's been moved and supported that we adjourn. If all the presentations complete, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?